Okay, you're good to go.
All right. As we begin our meeting, I'm going to start off with the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that our meeting today is taking place on occupied coast Salish land. We pay respect to Coast Salish elders, past and present, and extend that respect to their descendants and to all indigenous people. To acknowledge this land is to recognize the history of physical and cultural genocide and settler colonialism, which continues to displace indigenous peoples today. It is also to recognize these lands, waters, and their significance for the resilient resilient and wise people who continue to thrive in this region despite the consequences of displacement and broken treaties. Those who hold settler privilege in this city must work towards supporting the Coast Salish people and all indigenous people using the various forms of wealth and privilege that they reap due to it. All right, so announcements to members of the public and their visitors. Vanessa, do we have any members of the public in the room or on the call today?
There are four attendees.
Okay.
We don't know who they are, so.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome for all of those who are attendees. We're happy to make all commission meeting open to the public. Please note that the planning commission does not hold public hearings since the commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders that in turn make the actual decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. Also, obviously, it's clear that this meeting is a hybrid meeting, where some of us are participating virtually, while some of us are participating in person in the boards and commissions room at Seattle City Hall. All right, moving on to the Color Brave Space Norms. We are going to be trying our new experiment. I asked David in advance of the meeting to think about one of these Color Brave Space Norms and be prepared to speak to the particular relevance that the one that he selected has to today's agenda. David, I hope you saw that email and are ready to go.
I. Go ahead.
Go ahead. With that, go ahead.
I saw the email, Michaela, and I neglected to give the appropriate thought. But given that we have new colleagues joining us today, I want to focus on put relationships first. Build community and racialize trust and care. Relationships matter among us as well as with the community. And I think it's good to for us to keep in mind that relationships are really what make the world go around, what recognizes humanity in other people, and is truly the only thing that ever got anything done.
Well said. You can speak off the cuff effectively. Thank you very much. So going forward, if one of us reaches out to you in advance of the meeting, we're not just looking for you to read one of these, but to maybe help draw some connections. So we're centering on these in a little bit more meaningful of a way. We typically ask for amendments or modifications. Does anybody have any amendments or modifications that they want to make to these before we move on? All right. I need to go to the chat box. Okay. All right, so we can move on to the next agenda item. We have an overview of what we're talking about today. Next, on our agenda, we are going to get a briefing from the Office of Planning and Community Development on the recent downtown office to residential competition. We might even have some interesting observations from some of our commissioners who participated in that process, as well as proposed downtown land use changes related to the downtown activation plan. So it should be an interesting set of presentations and briefings followed by discussion. And I, for one, am very much looking forward to these, hearing from these presenters. But first, we will need to approve our minutes from the June 22 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
It was moved.
And who was that? Was that Caleb?
Yes, that was me.
Okay.
David was second.
David seconded. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I forgot to ask for changes in amendments. Maybe we'll time out on the voting. Does anybody have any amendments or changes to the minutes? Sorry. No. Okay, so we have heard from the ayes. I also say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions?
I've seen.
Is that an abstention from Andy for the record?
Yes.
And myself, Nick.
And Nick. Okay, thank you, guys. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. With that, the minutes from the June 22 meeting are approved. For quick chairs report, we have some upcoming commission meetings. The next Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting is on Thursday, July 20th, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. That meeting will be held online only using the MS Teams platform. And the next full commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 27th, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. This meeting will be held both in person and via MS Teams. I'm going to turn it over now to Vanessa, who has some announcements and commission business to walk us through.
Thank you, Michaela. As noted before, this is a hybrid meeting being held both in person and by MS Teams. I'm just going to quickly review the format of the meeting. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for questions and comments from commissioners. And we will be using the chat function of MS Teams for commissioners to join the discussion queue. I can assist in entering names of those commissioners joining us now into the queue and help Michaela facilitate the meeting. I have not received any public comment nor by email, nor are there any members of the public joining us. So we will not be reading any public comment or hearing any today. And I'm very happy to welcome three new mayoral appointed commissioners to today's meeting. We have reserved time at the end of the meeting for them to provide broader introductions than our usual name, pronoun, place of residents and agent. So with that, I'll ask Michaela to start the introductions. And after introducing yourself, please call on a fellow commissioner to introduce themselves, and we will conclude the staff.
Okay. Michaela Duffer, and she/her pronouns. I live in the Capitol Hill neighborhood. And I work in affordable housing policy and planning, and I co-chair the commission with David. David, you want to go next?
Sure. David Goldberg, he/him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village and work for the State Department of Transportation. And I'll call on Deanna.
Hi, I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. And I'm a multimodal transportation planner. I'll pass it over to Caleb.
Hi, my name is Caleb Tolday, he/him pronouns. I live in the Central District and I work at Reiner Scholars doing leadership development work and currently teaching history with our youngest scholars. And I will pass it off to Rose.
Hey, all. Rose Lucila Woodson. My pronouns are they/them. I live up north in Lipton Springs and I work for Jacobs Engineering as a wetland scientist and permitting specialist. It's hard to see who's live in the room. Do I see Lauren?
Yep.
You could call in Dalton.
I was trying to mix it up.
I'll call on you, Dalton. I'm Lauren Squires, she/her, live by the Mount Baker Light Rail Station and I'm a transportation planner at Nelson Niagara Consulting Associates. Dalton?
Yeah. Hey, everyone. My name is Dalton Owens, pronouns he/him. I live in the Ballard neighborhood and my full-time position is as a project engineer for a general contractor in Seattle. And I will call on, I also cannot see who's in the room.
How about Reagan?
Okay, great. Sounds good.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rick Mohler. I use he/him pronouns. I live between Wallingford and Green Lake. And I am an architect and educator. And I will call on Andy if we're at that point. Yeah.
Andy Denenberg, he/him pronouns. I'm one of the new commissioners who are starting right now. I teach at the University of Washington in both the school public health and in urban planning. And I live right near the university. And I'll call on Nick.
Hello, everyone. Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. This is also my first planning commission meeting. Happy to be here. I work at the city of Bellevue as the, I oversee the code and policy division. So do a lot of the implementation work of the conference plan. Oh, thank you. And I also, I live in the North Delray region in Seattle.
Robin?
Hi, Robin McGonigal. I live on the Ashon Island. I use she/her, they/them pronouns. And I am staff to the planning commission. And I would just note that Monica Sharma, one of our other new commissioners, is attending as an attendee. We're trying to get her in. Olivia and I are working on that. But she did put in a Q and A that she uses she/her pronouns.
Olivia?
Yeah, hi, everyone.
He/him pronouns?
What's up? I'm Vanessa Murdock. I I live in Cinni Greenwood, just outside the Urban Village.
And with that, turn it back to you, Michaela.
Okay, and for the others who are participating virtually, did the audio just cut out for you for a little bit? Was that just, yes?
No, a difference.
Yes. Yeah, okay. I know staff, I think most of us on staff know who you are, but for Monica's benefit, there was Robin, and then there was Olivia, and then I bet you John probably said something, and then there was Vanessa. So there's four staffs in the commission who probably introduced themselves. And you will eventually learn their names and know where they live and know all sorts of things about them. Okay, well, with that, is Lyle with us in the room?
He is.
Hi, Lyle. Hi, Lyle. Okay. If you don't mind, I'll just do a quick, I'll do a quick introduction of you and your agenda item. So Lyle is the senior urban designer at the city's Office of Planning and Community Development, joining us to provide an overview of the downtown to office competition recently hosted by the city. Mr. Bicknell brings a wealth of knowledge and experience regarding urban design and planning issues, and we welcome him and appreciate his time. Following his presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion by first asking commissioners to ask any clarifying questions. If you don't have a question, feel free to pass, and I can circle back to you at the end of the questions portion of the discussion. And then following that, we'll open up the floor to comments, and Vanessa's going to assist in monitoring the queue and ensuring all of the commissioners have an opportunity to participate in the discussion. So there's an order in which we do this to sort of ensure everybody has an opportunity to speak. And we have 55 minutes for this agenda item. All right, with that, Lyle, welcome.
Thank you, Michaela. I'm going to do very old school, low-tech presentation today. And for those of you playing along at home, we should have a good link to the boards that I'm presenting.
I'm going to attempt to walk you through on the power, like on the screen as well, so we'll see.
Excellent. I think you guys are aware of the Manners Downtown Activation Plan, the DAP. We're not really talking about that today, but we are talking about three elements of the DAP. I'm going to talk about our Call for Ideas contest, competition that we started in March and have just completed. And then my colleague, Jeff Wendell, will be here to talk about another element of the Downtown Activation Plan. And that is looking at downtown facility and rezoning changes. So I'm going to start giving you an overview of the competition. Worth noting that there's a kind of obvious need, an obvious solution, some of the challenges that we're facing right now with too much unoccupied commercial space and not enough housing. And it seems like a no-brainer to convert that office to residential. But in fact, it's really a brainer. There's a number of complexities, including just the nature of office floor plates, especially post-war office buildings. They don't have operable windows. They have, yeah, very large plates, not easy to convert. But even pre-war buildings, which tend to be easier on the residential side, still have a gauntlet of policies and permitting complexities to work through. And then, of course, the thing, pencil, and that's a real issue, too. Sometimes these things are so expensive to convert, you're actually better off starting from scratch rather than trying to do it. So we recognize it's a good idea. It's a desirable thing, not only in terms of providing housing, but more residential when it takes advantage of this incredibly rich transit amenity environment. It also helps activate our streets by having more people there at the time. And importantly, it helps our retail, which has been, you know, really challenging, really challenged during the last three or four years. So it's a good thing, and the city wants to help. We recognize it probably made more sense for the city to, rather than just tweak the code, tweak tweak policy, it made more sense for us to ask those developers, those building owners, architects for ideas, and then use that as the basis for potential change. So we, back in March, I sent out a call for ideas. And it was something of a unicorn in terms of what we were asking for in the sense that we were looking at buildings downtown, only buildings in downtown Seattle. We needed a building owner and an architect, development team, to pair up. And miraculously, we had 14 entries, which is, which is great. And then all of the entries were very solid. I'd love to help make any of them a reality. But the jury, and I must mention, Rick was a part of our guest jury that reviewed these projects. The jury focused on a couple of criteria for really singling out the top three. So we had a first place and two second place submissions. And that, those criteria were that the the project demonstrates innovation, comes up with some fresh ideas that we haven't seen before. But also, and somewhat contradictory, we wanted to see projects that actually could be built, that they had done their homework, that both from the physical side and the economic side, they demonstrated that it actually made sense. So that was an extra high bar. But these three projects, which I'm going to walk through, mercifully, I'm not going to walk through all 12, 14. But the top three, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of the tone and tenor of the proposal. So the first, second place, the first honorable mention went to Weinstein, I'm sorry, went to, yeah, Miller Hall was the architect for this project. It's the Pulser Wester Building just down the, down the street here. And you can see they did a very clever gesture. You know, the challenge with getting these large floor plate buildings is getting air and light. And in this condition, they dropped a courtyard down the center of the structure. Also significantly, they kept the office function on the lower levels with the residential above. You can see kind of ingenious ways that they employed to get access to light and air in the core here. And really presented some really compelling solutions here for these courtyard. Here you can see the two floor plans for the, this is the original existing office plan, and this is the conversion. Another piece that this proposal did was actually linked the two buildings, they're actually separate now, into continuous, continuous floor plate. The judges were also impressed by the idea of how you can change the units over time, that they can expand. As a family say, expands, and that that was all well thought out. And then the other piece that I think was very compelling is that this design team looked at the whole composite of the neighborhood and how this, there might be a ripple effect for this kind of system, this kind of solution, really for this whole area on your square and central water, which we thought was great. They look not just at the individual project, but again, it's big holistically. The recommendations, and I will say, most of the recommendations were very consistent across the proposal. You know, kind of the obvious things like waiving NHA, waiving development permitting fees, expediting, streamlining, review. We're going to get a little bit of the reads here. The subalt, substantial alteration threshold is a big deal for these buildings. And that when you trigger that, you've got to bring the entire building up to code and all codes. And that can be extraordinarily expensive, and a lot of these submitted suggested that we include that. It's been a challenge for us at the city because we are really loathe to reduce or eliminate any life safety codes. But having said that, we're up to looking at other solutions, including perhaps thinking of an energy code differently in certain conditions, giving away the fees. But bottom line, most of the codes we have are for a reason, and we need to be very thoughtful to ask me to change. We reduce them. But I think there's certainly worth taking a look at at my show and at STCI are meeting to figure out what can we actually do. We're actually going to invite a number of the submitters, including their technical team, their engineering team, meet with us so that we can really have a thoughtful conversation about what we can change and what we can't. So that was the first number two. Just dropped this. This is a little unusual in that we talked about how hard it was to get a building owner and a design team to work together, especially since a lot of building owners maybe didn't want to advertise their interest in conversion at this point. So in this particular case, the building is generic. You might actually recognize this building, but it's a generic Seattle building. Significantly, it's a post-war building. We talked about them before being more challenging to work with. In this case, they have the simplicity of a double loaded corridor, which makes, and a relatively small floor plate, which makes conversion easier. But we were impressed, the jury was impressed by a number of things. First of all, this is Gensler is the design firm. And they're, they're a national firm, and they've done some very good thinking about conversion and even have an algorithm for determining which buildings would make the best, best for office to residential conversion. And you can see using their tool, this is 87 out of 100, so it's a good, it's a good candidate. It also estimates, and I think this is an important component, especially when we're talking about the energy code, potentially waiving it, is it calculates greenhouse gas savings due to reuse. And I think that's an important consideration because these older buildings, even a building like this that was built in 1969, still has enormous amount of carbon, and not turning it down is a great energy saving way. Some of the other smart things that they did is currently the building has perpendicular parking off its backside, off the alley. And the design team proposed changing that into an active use for the residential component of the office. And I think that's really important. That's a distinction between office buildings and residential. Office doesn't mean that I have green open space as much as residential. That was a thoughtful, thoughtful consideration. Rick, please feel the jump.
I'll have to add some comments at the end.
Yeah, excellent. And again, the kind of proposals that they were talking about are subalt, suspending certain regulations, thinking differently about structure review. Almost everybody proposed speeding up the approval process. A number proposed that STCI, STCI actually identified this person to do that to help work on these projects through the process. So I thought that was interesting and certainly achievable recommendation. So I think that's it for this one. We'll switch to the final. First place, whether. The building, I suspect many of you know, visual light building right here, right practically down the street there. Very prominent corner in Panera Square, and excellent candidate for conversion. I think the jury was impressed by a number of things. First of all, just kind of a thoughtful way. They took the floor plate, made it into a residential floor plate. Another very intriguing and compelling part of this proposal was that the designers suggested that there could be a mix of unit types, including the kind of standard small efficiency apartment and one bedroom, but also congregant uses. So a 170 square foot, very simple residential unit that would have a shared amenities, shared community function elsewhere. But that, having something that simple would give you $950 a month, which is impressive when you're looking for it, especially downtown. So kind of thoughtfulness here. And then a second co-living unit, again, larger 350 square feet. But since you don't have the kind of the shared kitchen space, you're able to get that down to 1,200 a month. In a number of cases, through a pencil, these projects did recommend some level of public contribution. And I think that's something we need to look at as a solution to get to truly affordable housing. This may not be the model, again, unless there's significant public investment. But in terms of getting to housing, desirable housing, it certainly is one. And then they, they did a great job of showing their work and making it truly realistic in terms of what their, what their goals are. So and of course, the other advantage of this kind of building is you do have high ceilings and you've got great, you know, great windows, lots of natural light, which even for these very small units makes really the difference. Otherwise, they'd be incredibly uncomfortable. The light and the building height, room height makes a very convincing, convincing solution to residential. And the idea of having some level of congregant, shared amenity, co-living, they called it, makes, makes it a very innovative project. So that's a quick overview. We do have online and folks at home can look at all 14 submissions. But these were the top, these were the top three. And I think with that, come up with questions, observations.
Hey, thank you. Can I ask if any of the commission staff have a link to where those poster boards can be found? Can you email that out to the group?
Will do.
Thank you. I have old eyes and I'm having a hard time reading the finer details of these diagrams. So again, just to sort of repeat how we do this, we're going to start with clarifying questions and then move on afterward through with that to comments. Starting us off, Lauren?
Yeah, thanks. Well, what was the average kind of square footage of the units that you saw? Like, these are all kind of like one bedrooms or studios.
They were, that was the general mix.
Okay.
They did have a number of proposals that encouraged required three-bedroom units. And of course, that's always a challenge because, well, first of all, you don't always get families.
Yeah.
You get people with a study and an office. But, and then of course, that is more expensive. But it was impressive that a number of the proposals did include the three-bedroom solution. And we were impressed by that idea of designing these things to incrementally increase. And we were impressed by that idea of designing these things to incrementally increase. You start with studio and then as you're.
Yeah.
Which seemed very thoughtful and also responsive, you know, it could meet the market, market class.
I'm going to come up and look just while we do clarify questions.
Hey, Caleb.
Sorry to get loud, but I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. David.
No clarifying questions.
Diana.
Also no clarifying questions, thank you.
Rick? Can you possibly have clarifying questions?
No, I'm happy to add a couple of things to what Lyle said, but I can do that later when we get to the statements part.
Okay, let's hold for the statements part. Jamie, welcome. Jamie, if you don't mind, since you joined late, do you mind introducing yourself? Given that you're, you're probably noticing there's a few new commissioners sitting with you at the table?
I noticed that. Sounds like they got cups, so they must be. Absolutely. I'm Jamie Struble, immediate past co-chair with Rick. And I live in the future, 130th Station Area. That's how I, yeah, I'm willing it into existence. And I work in climate change and environmental justice and a lot in past background in community-driven planning and policy. And I also have been involved in some affordable housing for the past, it could be huge in the past. That all?
Yeah, thank you. All right. So Nick, do you want to go next?
Sure, I guess I have one clarifying question. It might have been on your board and I missed it, but was there, did the design teams have any ideas around the parking areas, if there was any sort of repurposing of those, or what's the application of those parking areas?
That's a great question, and I think we need to do it again, including parking garages in the, in the mix. That I think is a very interesting design challenge and certainly a relevant one. You know, the problem with parking often is that you have these two years' old planes, which may residential challenging. None of them addressed it straight on, other than the proposal with the ground level, turning it into green and usable community space. But I think it's a really interesting question, especially again for post-war, where you so often have floors and floors of even above grade, above grade much harder obviously, but above grade parking, it could make them much better, much better, especially. The real challenge is you get these floor, floor heights, so it takes some creativity. But I could see moths or something like that maybe being a design solution. Thanks.
Monica?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, everybody, I'm trying to get online. Should I do an introduction? Is this, is that okay? Okay.
Yes, just a brief one, and then we'll do a fuller one later.
Great. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I work for King County Play Equity Coalition, and I have a background in affordable housing, aging in place, and outdoor education. I, also because I have a hard time getting on late, forgive me, but I have a clarifying question, which is just that, does the congregate residence, is that part of the congregate housing services program? Is, are there, are there services that come with that housing, or is, are they just single, single units?
You know, who knows? This is a hypothetical proposal. But I think the intent, the intent here really was affordable solution that was not necessarily associated with public, public housing or homeless housing, just a decent, pleasant, well-lit accommodations for less than $1,000 a month. I, I'm really intrigued by this model generally. And we had the SRO model in this town for a while, and that worked well. I think it's a very compelling one, so the co-housing, the co-living notion generally, I think is broadly applicable. In this case, there wasn't that association necessarily. But there could be, but you've got ground floor spaces to simply accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
Great, we'll go back to Jamie. It looks like Jamie does have a question.
I'm looking at this Pioneer Square example, and is, in your hypothetical, would this, because I can't read the tiny, the tiny numbers, I think. Would it, would this also assume that the renovations would deal with unreinforced masonry?
Unreinforced masonry is really the biggest challenge, I think. And again, it's ironic because it's the pre-war building, it's the best candidate.
Yeah.
But of course, they're also the ones facing seismic, expensive, very expensive seismic upgrade questions. And, you know, we were in this line where you never want to waive those. And in fact, version, it'd be the great opportunity to fix that. And yet the costs then suddenly make it either prohibitive or very expensive. You produce a very high-end housing, which is not a bad thing in itself, but it's certainly not the path to affordability.
So that wasn't necessarily a criteria in the evaluation?
We asked them in terms of their performer to actually look at those upgrade costs. And that's one reason why the substantial alteration threshold was an issue, because right now that triggers old seismic.
I have a current language again.
If we can finish going around, I think we're still, Andy still has an opportunity to ask a question.
Um, one question about electrical and plumbing, is some of it really in horrible shape, or is it tolerable if you don't upgrade it?
I, I am not the expert on this, and I think some probably better than others. But you're right, it is a challenge because the plumbing and electric systems for an office, temporary one, very different from what.
I think internet and wifi.
But, you know, for those of us who are proponents of adaptive reuse, there are great examples all over the place, especially buildings like pre-war buildings, a lot of flexibility, warehouse buildings, you can do a lot, those high ceilings. So you're absolutely right, all that elevator conversion and all your infrastructure costs, those, those are part of the, part of the mix and part of the complexity.
Is there still knob and tube?
Yeah, I don't, I think that most of these places have been upgraded since then. But you're absolutely right, the whole telecom requirements, accessibility requirements, all of that figured in the mix here.
Hey, Lauren.
I was just wondering while if you would kind of like do a quick pros and cons for me, like, because I'm not an architect. So kind of what I gathered is like large floor plate means like big open area, no, no light. See, if you divide it up into small units, you can't have windowless residential units. So kind of figuring out how, how to get these big boxy buildings, if they are big and boxy, to have access, have light, the unreinforced masonry downtown, what are, what are some of the other kind of like just big hits, like?
Facial, windows are a big deal.
Okay.
It has, I am feeling comfortable living in a, since they didn't have.
Yeah.
Windows. At the same time, through extraordinary cost, especially with newer buildings, post-war buildings, where those window systems to replace are almost prohibitively expensive. So that, I think that's a tension with post-war. But we're seeing around the country with examples of it happening, so it's, it's not impossible. I like the idea of these kinds of buildings because, you know, they are so important to the, to the health of the city, to the health of the neighborhood, and the idea that you have a zombie building, that's kind of everybody's fear of just, you know, get a building. I'm referencing here the Mutual Life Building, a zombie building that just kills the neighborhood. That's, that's worse than nothing. So to the degree that we can help make these buildings happen, I think that's, I think that really is incredible.
Yeah.
Are there historic preservation rules that would make a complicated facade or otherwise to do some of these?
Yeah, our, our preservation review would be consistent. I mean, we were not waving that. There was a lot of recommendations coming out of the proposals to have that review done administratively rather than by board. I just present that to you, I don't necessarily wave these, but it certainly was important. And I should mention in the state legislature just passed a bill that would eliminate CIBA review for residential buildings that have, and that would be certainly applicable here. But notably, it still have intact historic preservation regulations.
All right, I have a question, and forgive me if you mentioned this at the top, but how is any of what you're trying to do here going to, is there anything that needs to be done through the comprehensive plan update process to support your recommendations or what's going to come out of the process? Or is this moving on a much slower timeline than the comp plan update?
I think it's moving at a faster timeline. Actually, you know, we're trying to get these, at least elements of these recommendations codified this year. So we're, you know, we, we've been on the fast pace since March, when we announced the competition. And the goal really was to not just end here at this point, but to implement everything we possibly do reasonably quickly. It's interesting, one, one entry did not follow any of the rules, did not even use a subject building. They said, I think this is important, they didn't win because they didn't follow the rules that they may have important point, which is the buildings are necessarily insufficient, we also need green space, we also need, we need streets, you need amenities at the ground level. Those are critical to all of this happening as well. And I think to the degree of the comp plan could pick up on that. Those elements, again, great transportation, pretty good walkability, but we're still missing a lot downtown. And since proximity can work, it's no longer kind of the automatic reason to live downtown. We need other amenities to make sure that we're attracting people to live here. So I, yeah, if I could get something strengthened in the comp plan, it would really be about if we're going to increase residential development downtown, ensuring that we have a.
Sorry, I, I think you're, the audio cut out for there for a second, but thank you. Do we have any other, do other folks, if you want to jump in the queue, please type your name in the chat if you have any additional questions. Otherwise, we can move on to the discussion part.
For those commissioners present without the laptop.
Did somebody in the room say they wanted to, they had a question? Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Sure.
I am again losing the room audio.
We're not talking.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. But I see, we have a list here in the chat, so I'll, I'll go off of that one, call on Rick next.
Oh, is that called upon? Sorry. Just wanted to make a couple of comments and add on Lyle's very complete presentation. One of the reasons that the winning scheme won is because it's, it's, it's a very rational response to the problem. But it's, it's not a huge floor plate, but it's a little bit oversized for housing. And so they took the center of the floor plate and turned that into common space. It only has light at one end, but that's kind of okay because the kitchen and other things go to the back. And then you have the more, you have the gathering spaces closer to the light. One of the things that they recognized, and it's just true, converting office into housing, there's a lot more infrastructure in housing than there is in office space. You've got a lot more bathrooms, a lot more plumbing, electrical is probably about the same. And they, and this proposal recognized that, and instead of putting a bathroom in each unit, it has a smaller number of bathroom cores to reduce construction costs and those infrastructure costs. That led to the idea of congregate housing, which then led to the opportunity to make this more affordable. And so that's what really impressed, that we were unanimous about this because it was just so clearly logical in terms of how they came to the, the design that they ended up with. The, the kind of post-war project that was done by Gensler, we had a lot of conversations about this because they actually did not include financial information, which was technically a requirement of the competition, but it was clear to us that they had it because everything else was so well-developed, but they weren't allowed to share it by either the building owner or the developer that they were working with. But what really excited us about this project is both on the alley and on the street, they took this rather nondescript building, and by adding these publicly accessible pieces to the front and the back, actually made the building more urbanistically responsive to the street and the sidewalk and pedestrians. The Miller Hall project, the one that's in the Paulson Building, the things that we really liked about this project also raised some concern. To support a note that, that the jury also included some developers who were looking at this through a very different lens than say I was looking at it. And the courtyard is great, the courtyard is also really expensive to do. The idea of mixing uses, including office as well as residential, that's an interesting idea too, but that also makes it more complicated because you have to have a different set of elevators that access the office space versus the residential space. So all of these things kind of increase the, the cost. So, so while architecturally, we liked a lot about this proposal, it did raise some questions in terms of the financial feasibility. And were they doing some things that were unnecessary and would make the project more expensive? The question of seismic upgrade, I mean, I don't think, well, the, this project, Miller Hall's offices are here, I'm pretty sure this building has already been seismically upgraded. And again, converting from office to residential, it offers you some really good opportunities to seismically upgrade the building because you have more walls, and walls can be used as sheer paddles to stabilize the building. But they have to come all the way down to the ground, which then could compromise your commercial space on the ground floor. Those are some of the, some of the complications. But, but my office, we converted an unreinforced masonry warehouse, we did a couple of these projects, to offices which triggered substantial alteration. And at that time, we had to completely comply in terms of life safety, which is understandable. But the city did waive about 50% of the energy cost. So, which to me makes a tremendous amount of sense because there's a lot of embodied energy in these buildings. And so to, to encourage them to be demolished for reasons of energy efficiency doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And then I think one's good one in that when we work with SDCI, it doesn't have to be binary. Maybe what we're going to code and you give some flexibility if they commit it.
All right, thank you for your observations, Rick. So nice to have somebody who was involved in the evaluation, able to sort of provide some opinions and reflections. Um, we do have a few more questions, so I'm going to call on Nick next.
So I think Rick actually in his comments were getting at some of what I was thinking. The challenges, I guess, with converting or having a mixture of both office and residential, the elevator comment in particular was enlightening. I am curious if, you know, given the changes in the, the market conditions in office sort of starting to chill a bit more, if there are projects that could potentially take advantage of any code policy changes that you all are crafting. So it's more forward compatible, even for projects that are wanting to make a switch as they're moving through the process.
Yeah, I just thought about that. I, you know, being flexible, giving some flexibility at that phase, that's really an interesting idea. And we've got a lot of buildings that have entered the process.
Sure.
The office, I suspect those might be, might be changed. And how can you assist with paper prints for this, not just the physical presentation?
Thanks.
Do you mind moving back down this way? I'm having a hard time hearing.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's this location, or if there's some static that's happening with the microphone in the room.
How's this?
Oh, better.
Okay.
One of the mics is.
One of the mics isn't working, so we'll just chalk it up to another adventure with MS teams.
Okay. So we're still on the clarifying questions part, and I know folks have some comments. So Lauren, you're the last call for clarifying questions. Go ahead.
I don't have a clarifying question, I have a comment.
Okay. All right. So Vanessa, remind me how we do comments. Do you also put a queue up for that, or do I just ask folks to drop their name in and tell me what their topic is about so we can organize this accordingly?
I'd ask for commissioners on the call with access to a laptop to add their name to the queue, and I will add the names of those commissioners in the room who do not have a laptop to the queue. So right now, we've got David and Lauren.
Okay. David, why don't you get us going with some comments?
Oh, okay. It strikes me that there are probably analogues out there in other places of these kinds of conversions and also the policies that permit them. I'm remembering several years ago, and there was a lot of work being done on codes for adaptive reuse, particularly in some of the older industrial cities that were trying to figure out how to revitalize their downtowns and keep all that energy from going out to the suburbs, et cetera, and try to make it easier to convert and adaptively reuse buildings. So I'm just, I'm wondering if OPCD and anyone else is making the effort to look beyond just this contest, which got some really interesting ideas, but I would bet there are analogues, both projects and code and, you know, policy approaches that we could borrow from. I'm wondering if anybody's doing that kind of research.
Absolutely. It's a really good point, and it's not even historical. Current projects in Chicago, we can look at, I'm actually on the ground in New York in a couple of weeks touring some of their conversions, which have been quite successful. So we're absolutely looking at some of these precedent solutions. You know, they have very different seismic issues, they have, in many cases, different substantial definitions, but there's no example like a built-up sample, and I think that's a great suggestion there.
So will that be compiled somewhere? And I'm really interested, you know, from the planning perspective and the comp plan, et cetera, and the follow-on to all this in the sort of the policy and code aspect of it as well.
I think that's a great suggestion, and as we have this discussion internally, I think having a description of where things are going, what codes, what policies we're changing, have that be transparent, that's an excellent suggestion.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. This is just going to be a bit of a ramble and kind of reaction because I appreciate this thinking, and it helps me kind of, and helps us, I think, think down the line of what is the future of what we build in downtown, I think is the bigger question, and what's the role of our downtowns moving into the future? Are, I think, I'm sure that they will can remain regional employment centers, but maybe not in the way that we're seeing the building stock primarily commercial and office, which is what this is getting at. And I personally work in the Coleman Building every day, which is across the street from a huge model with parking garage and across the street from a brand-new residential building, well, not brand-new, but the Post. And so, you know, even in that block alone, thinking about these three very different things, and it there at the doorstep of Light Rail Station, at the doorstep of Coleman, you know, the Coleman Ferry Terminal, as well as the linear park that will be the Seattle Waterfront. So when we think of these, this building stock, I actually, we were, personally, we thought we were going to have to move our offices a few years back because the Coleman Building was slated for redevelopment, but then I think the developer got a little scared with what the market was doing. And it was my understanding that those units were going to be luxury condos. And so really appreciate the thinking that's part of this design commission or this design competition to think about affordability, your comments were about the actual space composition leading to congregant housing, leading to affordability. But when kind of the broader, broader thinking, and hi Jeff, glad you're here, thinking about zoning changes in downtown and like what, what, from a planning perspective, I mean, not all of us are architects, what, that question of what is the future of our downtowns? What is the future of our investments downtown in line with our values of affordability, inclusivity, needing a range of housing and jobs for people of a range of incomes? And I think that downtown is the 15-minute-est of all 15-minute communities, if you will. And so thinking of the mix, the mix of things, I have been coming downtown all through the pandemic. I love leaving where I sleep to do my work. And I get on Light Rail and I come downtown and I go to a space to do work, and I've loved working in Pioneer Square, the bars, the restaurants, the entertainment, you know, I think with it being All-Star Week, seeing all of this activation happening in Pioneer Square, there's people roller skating in Occidental Park, like very good things are happening in this competition and these results like help me think, think forward towards that. And so with the mix of other things other than the built form that support families, older adults, single professionals living downtown, think about the green space needed, schools, the downtown school would be fabulous, but also thinking about the role of cars on our streets downtown, about not letting people drive on certain streets because we need green space, we have a limited amount of space between these buildings, and that's not going to change. And so I think that strategies like this and thinking about downtown as a walkable, green, healthy, less emissions, super blocks, walk up to the market, closing full streets, you know, this is, of course, I'm thinking way into the future, but that those are the types of things that complement this, this sort of vision. So thanks for that thought exercise.
You're getting some appreciation from David in the chat, and me too. I think you just wrote the beginning of our next position paper, once we're done with the comp plan. I feel like what you've said is really consistent with kind of our vision of what we've been talking about as a commission, and I just want to underscore some of the points that Lauren was making around affordability and that we're centering, who are we centering in these design competitions and these zoning changes? This is a downtown, I think the mayor slogan is downtown is you, but I have a hard time seeing in some of these plans a downtown that's affordable to everyone, a downtown that's welcoming and designed for families, a downtown that is a place where a small business owner can get their start, a downtown where our arts and our cultural space is vibrant and active. And so I just want to make sure as we think through how downtown evolves, that we're not just thinking about how to make sure that the property owners downtown have buildings that are financially successful and that our major corporations can reattract their employees to come and work at the facilities that they've invested in, but that we're creating a downtown for everyone instead of just a downtown for the you that the marketing campaigns are targeting. And so I would love to hear more in later proposals about what you're doing to formulate smaller commercial space, what other ways you're thinking about activating the street level? Because when I think about what prevents me from wanting to go and spend more time downtown, it's not the fact that there aren't people living up in the building, it's that the streetscapes are dead and they're not inviting and they're not interesting. And I want to go to a downtown that's a cool place to be, and I think that's what our tourists want, that's what our tourists also expect, that's what our employees expect. And so I just, I love the conversion, we need to think about it, but I think there's all of these other components about what really makes a place tick. And my final plug, because I love Capitol Hill, is, you know, our Pike Pine neighborhood has adaptive reuse buildings. We have some great architects and developers who've done some kind of building facade reconstruction projects in our neighborhood. And if you look in our community, it's built for the human scale. When you walk around, there's things of interest, there's materials that are tangible to the pedestrian. And so we also have some models locally that I think, and some expertise locally that could be tapped for what we do downtown. Jamie has a comment to mine, so Jamie, you're up next.
I just wanted to add on to that of like, I'd love to see what, what your office and the downtown team is thinking about arts and cultural space in downtown, because we've lost some pretty, like, amazing anchors in the last several years. One of my favorites was Cafe Nordo in Pioneer Square, where they did like immersive theater dinner parties. It was amazing, and a lot of like small, small like playwrights and actors got their start there. And we've seen, you know, in that area alone, like some of the restaurants that have been kind of anchor units there closing, and that, that all adds to the desire for people to want to live in those neighborhoods or things like that, vibrant arts, cultural and, you know, food scene. And we've, and I'm curious, like, I'd love to see, like, what's the plan that's equivalent to this like residential design competition of how could we be creative around arts and cultural spaces?
Lyle, do you, I feel like we've been talking at you for a few speakers. Do you want a chance to respond to anything we've said, or do you want us to move on to the next person?
These are all excellent observations. When we think about the recovery of downtown, it's not going to be a silver bullet, it's going to be silver buckshot. You know, it's going to be a lot of moves. This is one very small one, and it's not going to answer all of the very excellent points you guys brought up. I would love to have some sort of discussion or forum on ground level, retail, or whatever we're going to use in the future to activate our streets. We've been so dependent on retail to do that. Are there ways that we can use arts and culture to serve that purpose? Are there other ways that we can just preserve art and culture downtown? This again is very focused on residential, but adaptive reuse, as you know, suggests is can be a great solution for arts venues. So again, this is a very narrow slice of the problem, and we've certainly seen cities around the country, around the world, where if we get into affordability, it's just subsidy, and you can still use this model, but it's just takes, it takes a commitment of additional public resources. So I don't think we're exclusively locked into expensive units, but that's how, this is how the market can deliver if we want to do that, and we need to think about that.
Yeah.
Are some of these considered for live-work units for people who want to live downtown but might be teleported into who knows where?
Absolutely. I think that's going to be a new model. And again, if you're going to do that, you've got to make downtown a great place to live. And we're getting there with the waterfront, but I love the notion, Lauren's notion of rethinking our right-of-way, especially if we're not just serving commercial purposes, how can we pedestrianize and residentialize, if I can invent a word, our right-of-way more than we're doing today?
Right. Because I think we've been so reliant on pedestrians looking towards the building for that interest in that activation, and if we think about drawing their attention to the pedestrianized streets as another way, it might relieve some of the pressure on retail. Okay, Rick, you are next.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One is to congratulate Lyle and OPCD for a really successful competition. I was, Lyle asked me if I would participate in this, and I didn't really have any expectations going into it, but I was really impressed. Not only that there were 14 entries, but they were actually all quite strong. And so congratulations, Lyle, and I hope that you and your colleagues at OPCD really leverage this as much as can be possibly.
I'm looking to Jeff.
Leverage?
He's been for leverage.
Okay. That's good. And then, and then Lyle had mentioned that there was one entry which didn't really follow the rules and made the point that additional housing downtown is necessary but not sufficient. But of course, this is all public information now, and so that entry came from Scamata Workshop.
I love it.
Which is, as we know, is co-led by former planning commissioner Grace Kim, so surprise, surprise, that that would be the entry that while the city is focusing, it's like, no, no, open it up, and that's kind of our task.
And I, well, as I said, that's really important, all of this, that it only works if downtown is green, safe, desirable. Otherwise, yeah, there's no purpose here.
I'm going to jump in, Michael. I live in a cooperative, and so I would love to see ownership opportunities as a part of this. And this cohort, co-living community, I just think there, it's right for that. And so give people pathways to own something, and then you get really invested in people living downtown.
Is this a scale that would work for that, this type of building?
There are 100-unit cooperatives on Capitol Hill, you know, conversions of, you know, existing apartment buildings, obviously, but I would encourage the city to think not just towards rentals.
Lauren, are there regulatory complexities, you know, of other?
I wasn't, I wasn't the enforcer of the cooperative, but I'm happy to connect to.
Yeah, I think that, again, that's been a great value of this conversation, connecting to people who actually know the problem well.
Yeah, I live in an adaptive reuse of a corner store and old apartment buildings. So again, I guess a bit of a conversion from commercial to residential, but some very smaller scale.
Which like that one-bedroom size, two-bedroom is like perfect for like entry-level homeownership, like, yeah.
It's possible that we may need some additional adjustments to the state condo liability regulations to make it actually insurable. There's been some kind of, there's been some regulations that have made it too risky, I think, for developers to feel prepared to do condo conversions. Some fixes were done a few years ago, but we haven't really seen that wave of condo development or conversions happening. And so I suspect there's still some regulatory barriers that maybe master builders and folks could speak to about that, that may also need to accompany any kind of city-level policy change. But I too support that. We hear a lot about homeownership. I think Seattle's got some affordable homeownership funding, and this could be an interesting potential experiment of community-based living that, you know, fosters community that also provides affordable homeownership for people in downtown. So second that, yes and, and maybe we need some additional changes in Olympia.
Add it to the legislative agenda.
Yeah, yeah. We'll formulate a ledge committee this, this year. Andy, do you have another comment? I'm not sure if you, if you have another one, or if that was an old hand raise? Vanessa?
No, nothing.
It's an old one.
Okay. Anybody want the final word?
Julio.
Hi Julio.
Julio, hey, thank you for the tip on how to unmute myself on the phone, by the way. So hey, I apologize for the late interruption. I've been listening on the phone. My name is Julio Sanchez. When in Seattle, I live in the Capitol Hill area, and I work in community engagement. I do have a question for the presenter. How do you, I get concerned about the idea of food deserts, and I imagine people living in downtown areas, in office building areas. How do you ambition particularly that we don't have, we don't end up with a community of people living in an area in which affordable fresh fruits and vegetables are available? Because most of the downtowns are food deserts, and I mean grocery shops.
That's an excellent observation. Again, horrible fresh food nearby is critical amenity, critical amenity for successful neighborhoods. I will suggest, and this speaks to the broader challenge, you know, we've got two excellent grocery stores downtown now, Whole Foods and DCC, they're exceptionally expensive as well. So if we're really looking to address all markets, I think you're absolutely right, we need to address access to affordable, high-quality food. I wish I could wave my mom and make that happen, that's above my pay grade, but I'm thinking about all of these amenities to building successful neighborhoods is really critical. It's not just the housing, it's everything else.
We have the market.
We have the market as well. We have the market as well. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. And with that, we're just one minute over time, so I'm going to wrap up this agenda item and just thank Lyle again. Really appreciate your, your investment in this competition, your willingness to come and present to us today. And I think that this was a really, really nice primer and warm-up for our next agenda item. These are very related to one another in many ways. So thanks again, Lyle, for being here. Now, we are going to welcome Jeff Wentland. He's also joining us from the Seattle Office of Planning and Community Development and he's going to brief us on proposed land use changes associated with the mayor's recent downtown activation plan. You all remember that Jeff is a point person on both the maritime and industrial strategy, answered a lot of our questions there, as well as the mandatory housing affordability program. Although he is joining us today, not joining us today to speak on either of those issues. We have 45 minutes for this agenda item without, and Jeff has a hard stop at five, hence why I'm keeping us on time. After Jeff's briefing, I will facilitate our discussion again by asking the, following the same process that we just followed of clarifying questions first, we'll go in order in a queue. If you don't have a question, you can feel free to pass, circle back to folks at the end, then we'll move on to discussion. All right, again, just to reiterate, we have 45 minutes for this agenda item. And with that, I will turn the floor over to Jeff. Welcome.
All right, great. Thank you, Michaela, and nice to see you all, commissioners. Yeah, this is really a, a direct segue from Lyle's presentation. So I don't have, I didn't bring any boards, which I thought is great, but Lyle actually has real boards. Yeah. I do have some slides that I'll speak to. I'm going to try to bring those up right now. And we see that, yes. See if I can make it a slideshow. Okay, great. Okay, so yeah, I'm just going to talk a little bit about some legislative items that are in support of the downtown activation plan. Just the letter that was at the front of that plan from the mayor. You all know that Mayor Harold, it's a high priority to advance this downtown activation plan concept. I want to sort of acknowledge that these are some short-term, you know, minor actions that the city can move forward right away. I don't want to suggest that the things that are being carried forward here are, you know, major long-term strategies or, you know, fixes to, you know, significant issues. There are really some, you know, tangible, quick things that, that we can accomplish. So I'm going to take you through a list of those that the city, OPCD. Through this list real quick, so retail core area. Flexibility for lodging uses in Belltown. SDOT is leading an effort to allow digital kiosks in downtown. They're spearheading that. They're also leading an effort to temporarily waive permit fees for vending and events. SDCI is leading an effort to change expiration rules around master use permits. So, you know, projects that might be stalled out, don't, don't get their, don't have their permits expire. I'll follow up on Lyle's presentation on facilitation of office residential and talk about some code changes we're looking at for that. And then SDCI is leading an effort to look at some of the rules around ground floor resident, uh, used regulations. So I'm going to drill down on these three highlighted items. So the first one that's in progress is the downtown retail core zoning amendment. And what this would do is reason on parts of the downtown retail core along Third Avenue to encourage residential development. The proposed rezon is from the downtown retail core zone to a downtown mixed commercial zone. I'll talk about what that does. It would have a tower spacing requirement. And coupled in this legislation is also amendments to support new school or education facilities in downtown. That wouldn't just be in the downtown retail core zone, but that's something that folks have wanted to see for a long time. And this would just provide some additional incentive for it. This is the area of the proposed downtown retail core zoning amendment. So my cursor, but it basically goes from Stewart down to Union along Third Avenue. So if we look at the, the aerial photo, that's like the Macy's garage.
We have former Crest IGA. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, former Crest IGA down to the Wild Ginger. And then we'll go over to where the Abercrombie and Fitch used to be, which is currently vacant. It includes the Ross building.
That big white, that's Westlake.
Uh, Westlake, Westlake, yeah, Westlake is right here, this triangular area. The big, that's the Macy's.
Oh, that's the Macy's.
Former department store.
Okay, now I'm worried.
Yep. Dance this. Okay, so the, the idea behind this proposal is to encourage investment, particularly on a, you know, a key block or two. The existing downtown retail core zone just hasn't seen the type of residential development that's been seen in Belltown and Denny Triangle. So it basically extends a zone that we have up in those neighborhoods for this geography. Adding residential density downtown, I'm sure you talked about that a lot, but OPCD feels good about the idea of just more residential downtown to balance out the mix with what's historically been a lot of commercial uses and incentivize the possibility of that to the school. So this is just a comparison of the existing downtown retail core 85170 zone. And in this image, the building that's outlined in the black line here is, it's not a building that's built, but one that's was proposed as an early stage, gives you a sense of amassing of what the typical mid-scale building that could be developed in that zone. The proposal would be to allow for residential towers like you see in Belltown and Denny Triangle. There's a lot of examples out there now, this is one of them. So it would have a 440-foot maximum heights. It's, it's been a model that's really worked for residential investment in those neighborhoods. So, you know, this would carry that for focused geography along Third Avenue. Let me just lastly just say before I leave this, that, let me go back to the map here. The key sites are the former Crest IGA sites, which if you've been out there recently is basically that building is not really doing very well. And there are a couple of other vacant sites in this area. The, the other one we think that has some potential is the, where the Abercrombie and Fitch store used to be. We don't think this would be towers everywhere. There's, there's landmarks in this area. A lot of these blocks wouldn't change, but you know, thinking this might support one to two new towers over a, you know, five to 10-year time horizon. Okay, Belltown lodging use flexibility, this is a pretty minor change. It addresses one zone in Belltown. It basically would change things to treat lodging uses, that's hotels, the same way that residential is currently treated, which is exempt from an FAR limit. There's an FAR limitation on lodging. So no changes to the height bulk scale or envelope of what could be built, but it would just allow for buildings to fill that envelope with lodging instead of residential in some cases. It also would only provide this flexibility for new development, not for conversion of existing housing. And the, the area that could be, would be affected is from Wall Street at the north down to Lenora at the south. And from the alley between Western and First up to the alley between Second, Third. So it's a pretty focused area. We know of one site in particular that's pretty interested in, in doing this. They've already, you know, done a lot of design work. And the other sites that could potentially take advantage of it are surface parking lots. This is the rendering of that, that site that's interested. It would be this, you know, the change that's proposed, it's the same building, basically looks and feels the same, but it would, could be lodging instead of roughly half residential and half lodging, which it would be limited to under the existing rules. So the intent here is that, you know, one sector of the economy that's remains quite strong in, in and around downtown is hospitality and lodging. There's, I know there's pros and cons to that. The Belltown community approached OPCD with this proposal. They like it, and I'm speaking of the Belltown Community Council, can't speak for everyone, but they, they do want to see investments and activation. So that's part of the rationales that it's supported. And let me just say a few words about facilitating office to residential conversion. OPCD is preparing what I'll call umbrella land use code legislation that would exempt proposals that are just doing addition of dwelling units within an existing structure from development and design standards, regulations. You probably wouldn't, it's, you know, you, you, in many cases, you wouldn't have a problem with those anyway, but this is kind of like extra protection. And that's why I'm calling it umbrella, also exempting it from CEPA review, design review, and from mandatory housing affordability contribution. And this, most of those things comply with and mirror state legislation that passed this year. There are a lot of, a lot of high-profile bills, but this is one that didn't get as much attention, but it did clearly give cities a mandate to, to give those exemptions. And the last point is just untailing on Lyle's presentation that OPCD and SDCI are convening detailed workshops with the call for ideas, submitters. And what this would do would be to get the SDCI experts in the room, look at those proposals on a case-by-case basis and give them guidance and interpretations on energy, seismic and mechanical code issues, without them having to like formally enter the permit process. So it's like providing value to them. It's basically like a free review time by SDCI staff and tried in to advance a couple of those projects. So that, that concludes my presentation. Those are all the slides I have. And I'm happy to have some time to discuss with you.
Jeff, you, you always get handed the most technical, complicated conundrums and I'm you and if you have a team of people working for you, I'm always amazed at what you're able to come out from a technical solution perspective.
Thanks, thank you for saying that.
Jeff bravely, Jeff, I encountered Jeff in the trenches in Capitol Hill when we were trying to problem solve around the Pike Pine Conservation Area and mandatory housing affordability. And definitely responsive to people getting in a room and saying, here's what it needs to achieve and very open to finding solutions for how we get there while still meeting life safety requirements. Sorry, I know I'm not, shouldn't be providing commentary yet. We are in the clarifying question phase. We've got a queue listed here in the chat. Julio, you are first. Do you have any clarifying questions?
You may need to press star six again.
The
We can hear you now.
This time. I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Rick?
None, thanks.
Dalton?
None for me, thank you.
David?
No, I don't have any.
Rose?
None for me.
Monica?
None for me.
Oh, I skipped Jamie, sorry. Okay, thank you. Jamie?
No questions.
Andy?
No questions.
Hey, Nick?
May I ask a question? It sounds like. Okay, all right, okay. Thanks for the presentation, Jeff. This is really interesting. I am curious because the downtown activation thing, it sounds like you had mentioned these are actions that are on a faster clip to help activate the downtown. And so with the rezones and understanding that you are bringing more density to the area, you had mentioned existing buildings that adding it's could get some exceptions to their relaxation to the design standards. There's a little more flexibility there, seat base options, et cetera. Was there any thinking about with the rezon allowing some of those new units also have some flexibility to, to ensure the pace of those units come online and matches the urgency that the plan is trying to bring with this as well? And then also because of the bills that the state passed this past year, was I think consideration, and I think it was Senate Bill 5412 that talks around the CEPA exemptions that could be raised for residential units to a limitless amount. Was that being considered at all through this process?
Great question. Yes, and the city absolutely wants to advance the CEPA exemption, you know, changes. We felt that doing it or exploring that for these small and targeted geographies was, was maybe not the best fit, like that we need to be, you know, take a look at it for, well, just to invest that effort in making those flexibilities should, should be a broader geography. And, you know, we'll keep pursuing that, but, you know, on a larger scale, not limited to these small actions, but yeah.
Vanessa, maybe, I think there was some information shared by, shared with us at our, after our last commission meeting from SDCI about the CEPA exemptions. Maybe you could forward that to Nick if he's interested.
Well, David, thank you.
Okay. Lauren?
Thanks, Jeff. I was wondering about the bounds of the zoning changes along Third and show that map again. And just why that particular corridor and block and why not bigger?
Show the map again.
I'm not sure what DRC is. It was like, there was the dotted line around the DRC zone.
Yeah. There we go. Yeah, so the, the question is why not a bigger area? And the, the answer is that on a, on a fast timeline with a, a bigger, larger, more comprehensive change to zoning really needs a little more thoughtful view. So we, we wouldn't feel comfortable straying too far from like a comprehensive plan policies or doing this outside of the downtown suburb area plan. The downtown retail core, I think, is, is outdated and that's described a little bit in the documentation. It was sort of created around, you know, a shopping mall type experience when that was, you know, 20, 20, 25 plus years ago, sort of thought of as like a really good fit for downtowns. And then, you know, that has changed. So we're moving away from that a bit in a, in a stepwise way with this proposal, but still don't feel like we could say change all of the but still don't feel like we could, say, change all of the downtown retail core zone or delete it, for example, without having a, a little more of a comprehensive look.
Is this really just linking together, state and problematic sites?
It's, it's linking together, yes.
Yeah.
I appreciate the directness, Lauren.
Yeah, it's a squiggly line, so I was wondering why.
Yeah.
Um, what I'm hearing is increased flexibility. What are the concerns that the free market would do if you made things just a lot more flexible? I mean, expensive condos or something? Or what what's the concern? For Mickey.
Well, people, you know, community members do have legitimate concerns sometimes. With regard to what's on the screen right now, I, uh, the only, one of the only comments we got on this proposal is from the residents of the Fisher Studio Building, which is in the, in the area. You know, I went up and talked to them in their home, and, um, they have windows that are basically right on the property line. And, you know, they have legitimate questions about the design of a new building that could potentially just, you know, block a lot of their light air. So those are the types of, uh, questions we hear from community members.
That, that's.
All right, Caleb.
No clarifying questions from you right now. Thank you.
Have you been engaging the school district at all in the idea of the, the specific location for a school? Or incentives for a school?
Uh, we did talk with the school district. Thank you for asking. No specific location, but one interesting thing to me is that, um, it would probably have to be, like, identified as a line item in the school district's new levy. So the Bex renewal is coming up, and they're thinking about that. The other thing that would have to happen is that, uh, there'd have to be a matchmaking process with the developer, like, very, very early on, um, because the school program is like so unique. There have been some explorations before, like with the two new building, and it just didn't quite work because it was a little too late. So those are some of the things we heard from the school districts.
Okay. Um, yeah, we don't have any strong relationships with our school district counterparts. But I, I know that they would be a key partner in realizing anything that that gets built there. So, thank you. Um, okay, we can move on to, um, sorry, does anybody have any additional clarifying questions? Okay, we can move on to any kind of comments. Folks want to drop their name in the chat box? I can call on people in the order they arrive. Lauren.
Yeah. It's helpful to think about, this, this presentation has helped me think about just the characterization of the downtown retail core versus Belltown, and even question why they're sort of distinguished from each other. Now, we were having a conversation earlier around, you know, what's the future of what we build downtown? Like, what, what is the future of downtown? And making it a more holistic, 15 net neighborhood. And I appreciate the nimbleness of these recommendations, that you're being really responsive, um, and that we, as who took the conference plan, want to be partners of like a lot of the thinking that is being seeded by this commercial residential competition, as well as the action plan that you're advancing under the mayor's directive. And so, you know, I'm not an architect, but kind of thinking about even just the photo you showed of like, this is what's typical in Belltown. It's space, it's huge tower, um, you know, and I have friends that have, have reinvested and like bought downtown, bought a condo in Belltown and want to work downtown now. But what if they didn't have to make that walk? You know, what if that, what if downtown have stitched together and had this finer grain of uses of residential? Um, and then even just think, kind of thinking about the downtown retail core being, kind of being this outdated vision of like, come down to a sick place and go to a big theater and buy some jeans that are comfy. But what, like, could a mall become a school? You know, like, could, what, what are the forms that we can, we can use and stitch together? I really appreciate the theme of this commission meeting. Um, and so maybe you could kind of speak a little bit to that, that stitching, or like what, what you would dream forward in the comprehensive plan update. Maybe from, it doesn't have to just be from a building perspective, you know, but, you know, we're thinking of building an entire new tunnel through downtown for West Side Baller and like the extension. And then, um, really wanting to, to invest in kind of, how do you say, like, detailed or kind of with like surgical ways downtown, because it is a very established built environment. What else could we do but that, that divide between the downtown retail core, kind of the civic area that we are in Pioneer Square? And like what, what that stitching and kind of diversifying of uses could look like from its own perspective or a comp plan update perspective? I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Yeah. A great comment. I, my, a couple of things. Number one is that, uh, I think we should just acknowledge that the downtown retail core strategy and like the, a lot of the regulations around, um, requirements for active ground floor uses are outdated. I think it's a great topic for the downtown suburb area plan and/or the, um, comprehensive plan. Because, well, and Seattle's not the only city that's dealing with this, but brick and mortar retail is just not what it used to be. So like, there needs to be some kind of, well, an opinion is that there needs to be some kind of like reevaluation of where you really want to try to get activity. What's a new concept around like key nodes or places for, um, for activity? I think the existing plan is outdated on that.
What kind of zoning changes are possible?
I, I mean, there could be a lot, all, all kinds of changes. But after the, uh, you know, going through that thought process with, uh, in the suburb area plan, um,
When was the suburb area plan done? Like long?
Two thousand and six, I think.
Okay.
I think two thousand and six. Oh, yeah. And the other one is the civic campus is a great issue.
Yeah.
Because King County wants to, uh, reimagine that, and all of our existing planning documents, you know, describe it and regard it as this, uh, you know, civic governmental campus. So that should also be updated in the, uh, in the planning documents.
A dumb, dumb clarifying question, probably laying off of that. Is the suburb area plan going to be updated concurrent with the comp plan update? Or is it going to be separate and done through that urban center? Like, what, how is the, when is that happening next?
Um, it's, it, it's roughly concurrent with the comp plan major update. It's required to be completed by 2025. Um, so Amy Nguyen, um, in OPCD is leading on that, and I'm sure she'd be happy to talk with you more.
Thank you.
I think there's more engagements, um, happening starting this summer on the downtown. I used the wrong term. I shouldn't say suburb area plan. Term now is downtown urban center plan.
All right, Rick.
Thanks for the presentation, Jeff. I really appreciate the city identifying potential on service parking lots in Belltown. Anecdotally, just watching the development in the U District, where I know that was a whole system of development happened primarily on service parking. There's a lot more service parking in the U District than there is in Belltown. But, um, it seems to be pretty successful. It looks like the vast majority of the development is either happening on service parking lots or single story commercial uses like gas stations and banks and things like that. And I'm just wondering if there are any lessons learned through the success in the U District that might apply to this effort in Belltown?
Oh, gosh, I, I don't know if I have a direct one. I think, an observation I have about the U District's plan and what's happened is that the analysts said they're not going to be towers in the U District for 20 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the concern was there would be no residential. The concern that I kept hearing is there would be very little residential building. It would be all commercial office space, and it would be another Southlake Union around the university, and that's not what's happening. It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
I mean, that's our most, that's our latest urban center, right?
Yeah.
It's all like, it's amazing looking at it. And then, Murphy's coming next.
I'm impressed with myself. I, I remember you speechless. He's here to talk about downtown.
Sometimes it's okay to say you don't know.
It was.
We have about 13 minutes left. Does anybody else have, um, reflections or comments or feedback?
I'm hoping to follow up on this conversation to have any plans, yeah?
That would be great. I think she would. I think, I think you all would like to hear talk about suburb. That'd be great.
Yeah.
I'm drawn to this idea of just making downtown another neighborhood, right? Like, where do we, where did we all find ourselves spending all of our time during COVID? In neighborhoods, because that's where things were happening. Um, and I,
That's why.
Yeah, true.
Well, to our earlier point, though, about the SCADA design proposal, it's like, there's a lot of amenities that need to happen here to make it more livable. Like, you know, in COVID, it was, there was a stark difference in, in experience of, of living in the neighborhood. If you were in a tiny, in a efficiency unit with no access to outdoor space, the very different experience than people who lived in a 7,200 square foot, you know, lot with a big backyard, so.
And a park across the street.
And a park across the street.
If you haven't read it, Jeff, we did write a position paper on Reinventing the Right Of Way. That could, could serve as a playbook for ways we can reimagine how we use our public space and our public realm. And downtown is, you know, a, a key part of like the public realm that we all experience and that people regionally experience. And they travel from all places in the world to see. And it could be fabulous. And I, um, uh, appreciate the mayor for having a vision for trying to bring it forward. Um, and appreciate you acknowledging that this is just the start of a longer conversation that needs some more thoughtful and intentional comprehensive planning around it and more community conversations to figure out what the right approaches are at a broader scale. Uh, but I also think that actions needed now. And so I, um, one observation I have is that I, I do, I do think that our, um,
Somewhat.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Jeff.
Did I interrupt somebody?
Your, your audio is cutting in and out.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'll stop talking.
We cut enough at the beginning that I think Jeff can respond.
Great.
Yeah, what I wanted to say is that, in some ways, the timing of the mayor's downtown activation plan has been a challenge to, um, OPCD's, you know, long range planning effort for really re-envisioning downtown. And Amy can talk about that more, but it's taken up a lot of oxygen. And that team, you know, probably wants to engage things on, you know, some big questions. It's a little difficult to do that when we have such an immediate near term, you know, set of problems people want to make progress on. So that short term, long term dynamic is, uh, is, is one we're grappling with a bit.
I think it's a yes and approach, both, do them, do them both. Think long term and strategically about where we go in the future with this and how we, what our long term plans are for change. But what are the interim things that we can do? All right, I killed enough time that now someone else has a comment. Nick, thank you.
Oh, it was maybe a question off of the response you just provided, Jeff. So the area that you're looking to rezone, is that now going to be off the table then? And the comprehensive plan is updated? Or is it possible that you might actually reevaluate that area yet again?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be off the table, you know. There could be other changes.
All right, well, Nick, or Jeff, thank you again. We really appreciate you being here. Um, always love to dive into wonky zoning changes and, um, have an opportunity to provide input on them. Is there anything else that you needed to hear from us, Jeff, before you close out?
Um, there's still time. Legislation has not been transmitted to council yet. So if the commission has thoughts, guidance, please send it over and, you know, it can still, you can still influence if there's something here that you're concerned about, let us know. Thank you.
All right. Should go find my speaking notes. I think I'm turning the floor now over to Vanessa for some commission business.
Thanks. I apologize for the poor audio quality that some commissioners may be experiencing. We're down to one mic in this room, so that's to be moving around a bit. I'm going to turn it over to John for a very brief update on the STP, otherwise known as the Seattle Transportation Plan. Um, and then I'd like to take a few minutes and give our new commissioners an opportunity to provide a little broader introduction than, um, name, place of work, and place of residence. So, um, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, I have to talk a little bit earlier. Happened soon enough.
Okay. Well, there may only be one mic in the room, but there's also only one John, so I guess that's me. So just a really brief update on the status and timing for the release of the Seattle Transportation Plan. The, the latest information that we had previously from S dot staff was that the, the draft STP and the draft environmental impact statement would be tentatively scheduled for mid-July. And we had a draft timeline and review schedule according to that. However, we always kind of held that in the, in our, in our lightly, in our back pocket that things could change, and it looks like they may have changed. So the latest information that we have as of now is that it looks like the draft STP uh, may be delayed a few more weeks, and we may be looking at sometime in early to mid-August for release of the draft and the draft EIS. With, um, August being a vacation month for many, it, it, we're very interested to see when specifically it does come out and how that fits within the commission's schedule of full commission meetings and committee meetings. But we are prepared to, to fit it in wherever it, it, it falls. And, um, I am in contact with S dot staff, and they are, they, they actually sent out an email that I will forward on that kind of is a, um, be on standby. It's coming, just be prepared. But there was no, there was not a lot of specific, specific information. So we're in touch with them, and they have promised to let us know as soon as there is more information. But, so that's, that's, um, that's what we have as of now. Vanessa, do you want to add anything?
And we have 60 days after the release of that, the comment period?
We don't even know that for sure. The, the required minimum for review of at least the EIS is 45 days, but I imagine they will probably But I imagine they will probably hear from many that 60 days is, would be more useful. So we're hoping. And we can certainly be one of those that comments that 60 days would be more beneficial for us or in fact necessary for us to provide appropriate comment. So we have no idea.
You haven't even seen an outline.
Yeah.
And if I could just jump in for a moment for the benefit of the new commissioners. The Seattle Transportation Plan or the draft plan that we will see at some point is meant to actually provide guidance on the hierarchy of the motor plans. So Seattle has a pedestrian master plan, a bicycle master plan, a freight master plan and a transit master plan. And each of those plans exist independently. And there is, there is, the hope is that the Seattle Transportation Plan will provide guidance on what to do when those plans are, have differing advice and direction at various either intersections or along arterials and whatnot. So the pedestrian board, the bike board and the freight advisory board are also following this very carefully and waiting for the plan to come out.
I would, I know that we were trying to do some proactive planning around getting ready for it. And we were able to do that with our comp plan and we weren't able to do that with this plan because you just didn't even know the structure or the organization of the document. And so if you would be willing, maybe you could ask one more time if there's anything they could share with us that would help you as staff and us as the commission be ready when it gets released. And then I would just underscore the suggestion you made, John, that I, that 60 days is necessary for a meaningful public comment period if they're going to release it anytime in August, just because it's so hard to get people into a room. And everybody's taking time off. And so it feels like a very strategic way to make sure that they limit the amount of public comment that they get if they keep it at 45 days and release it in August. So.
Michaela, thanks for that. I neglected to mention that next week's land use and transportation committee meeting has already, the memo will be coming out and you will see that we are scheduling to have a preliminary, another high level issues identification and discussion to help prepare us for the eventual release of that document. So anyone that is interested, please come and I will be, I will be compiling information from previous meetings and to help lead that discussion so that we can have yet another opportunity to kind of be ready for the eventual drop of the plan.
Great. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for John on this matter? All right. Thank you, John. I don't know if you have additional committee business updates.
Nope.
Michaela, if it's all right with you, I'll just invite our new commissioners to introduce themselves. And I'm going to start with you, Monica, as you didn't have the chance to do so at the beginning of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, when we all went through introductions, commissioners introduced themselves, their preferred pronouns, where they work and where they live. But we wanted to provide some time today to hear a little bit more from the new commissioners. So feel free to share whatever you care to share.
Thank you. And sorry for having my technical difficulties at the beginning. Thank you all for your patience. Yeah, so my name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I'll just reiterate what I said before. I live in the Central District. I work for King County Play Equity Coalition. I've only been there about two months. I was at Bike Works for several years before that, doing hands-on education with young people and teaching them how to ride bikes in the city, which was a pretty crazy experience. And I feel lucky to have gotten to learn the city through their eyes. I feel like I view it very differently than I would have if I hadn't gotten to see it through their eyes. Prior to that, I worked in affordable housing for seven or eight years back in Massachusetts where I grew up in a variety of ways, but kind of the through line was I worked in construction in affordable housing. And then when I moved to Seattle, I was retrofitting homes for aging in place and doing a lot of work on like fall prevention in, for aging homeowners and helping aging homeowners like access a city's roof loan program. So I feel like I've kind of, my relationship with the city has been kind of through supporting others navigate through the systems. This is kind of my first time being on the inside of any planning efforts in Seattle. I'm really more familiar with the nonprofit world. I got a master's in planning from the University of Massachusetts Amherst with a focus on racial equity and crisis response. I was finishing my degree during COVID. So as I'm sure you can imagine, that was complicated, but also quite interesting. Yeah, I feel like I don't even, I don't even know. In my current work, what I do, I, I mean, I'm still figuring it out because I'm so new, but what we do a lot of is, our goal is to make play more equitable and accessible. And a lot of that is working with Seattle parks, King County parks, talking about people's access to space, access to the outdoors, who gets to define the outdoors. And we're a movement builder, so I do a lot of coalition work. So really the core of what I do right now is trying to facilitate connections between organizations that are doing this work and connect us to government resources. So glad I'm here for that reason as well, to get a better understanding of that. Yeah, I feel I am disabled. I have been navigating the city as a disabled person. I'm, I have an immigrant parent, which connects me to a lot of Seattle in a lot of ways. I actually have continued to mentor many of the youth that I worked with at Bike Works through that connection. And that has been really rewarding for me. When you said STP, I was thinking this weekend is the Seattle to Portland ride. I don't know if that for anyone else. I'm like excited and dreading biking 200 miles with a bunch of 14 year olds, but it is what it is. Yeah, I'm really excited to be here. I know I have a lot to learn. I'm excited to be able to bring a couple of different perspectives and voices. Thank you, Caleb, for sharing the posting with me. Very grateful for that. Grateful to see you here. Yeah, I feel like that's all I've got. Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks so much, Monica. Yeah, as time rolls on, you'll get to know all of us better and we'll get to know you better. And that was a great, a great intro. Touched on quite a lot. We're really happy to, really happy to have you on board. So thanks for that.
Sure, I can go next. So, yeah, Nick Whipple, key him pronouns. I mentioned earlier, I'm a planner at the City of Bellevue. I live in the North Del Ridge neighborhood with my wife and young daughter. She's just over the age of two now and really love the neighborhood that we landed in. Were able to walk to her daycare and just be able to enjoy beautiful parks, stores nearby, et cetera. So it's really a great place that we've found in Seattle. And in my day job, I work in our code and policy division. So I oversee a team of planners that's responsible for drafting a lot of our land use regulations, working on a lot of the rezoning efforts that are happening in the city, implementing our affordable housing strategy. I coordinate on some of the state legislative items. So I hope to kind of bring some of that knowledge with me in our conversations here at the planning commission. This is, yeah, something exciting for me in my kind of stage of career to be able to engage with the city of Seattle and some of the land use challenges that they're all grappling with here. And to be able to really help shape the community that I live in, I love. I'm from Washington State, grew up in Spokane, moved over here in about 2014 and just absolutely love Seattle. So it's been a great, great place to live. And my background, both my educational background and professional background is in planning, so.
Thank you. You also, so at the City of Bellevue, what is your relationship to the Bellevue Planning Commission?
Yeah, so with the Bellevue Planning Commission, I am there all the time. I wasn't there last night, though. But I do often present a lot of our kind of land use or housing policy changes to the planning commission. I also frequently at our city council advising them on land use and housing policy matters. I was just there this Monday with two different items. I'll be there next Monday. So it's regularly engaged with our elected and appointed officials at the City of Bellevue in my capacity as the code and policy planning manager. So, yeah.
Thank you so much. Welcome. And I don't think we, well, it would be really interesting to hear your insights on how this body is different from that of the Bellevue Planning Commission.
Yes.
It would be great to sort of learn from you. If there are any practices that they employ that you think would be helpful, we're all ears.
And vice versa, if I can take some of the Seattle part of the mission over.
Happy, happy to. And your experience working sort of on the inside in the public sector will be really helpful to this body, I believe, just having an understanding of what it's like. Most of the people who present to us work for the City of Seattle. So it's helpful to have a commissioner have a perspective on what it's like to be on the other side of the table presenting. And so thank you for that and welcome. We're very excited.
Does the Bellevue Planning Commission have mugs?
Or don't ask. What if it's better size?
You've gotten some mugs, but yes, not this beautiful blue type mug.
Andy.
Thank you for the mug.
Good. I'm coming from a somewhat different world. I'm a physician and working in public health for many years, primarily in academia and government. And about 20, 25 years ago, was working at the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta. I grew up on the East Coast, various places there. And working with some other physicians in public health, we were looking at how do you improve health when a lot of the things we do in the medical world, go get some exercise, go get some healthy food, are not controlled by the public health world, they're controlled by the people who design and build the world around us, the built environment. And so what we did then, and this was actually a meeting sitting around, what is it we need to do to get to know these other worlds that we had very little exposure to, identified really three different areas, which was urban planning, architecture and transportation as major professions that build the world that we live in, that affect you. You know, there's one sentence version, you want people to walk, somebody's got to build sidewalks and trails. And public health doesn't do that, the planners and others that make those decisions. So we were there, so we're looking nationally, we're sitting in the federal government and reached out to US Department of Transportation, the American Planning Association, the American Institute of Architects, the Transportation Research Board, a whole range of major, basically national level organizations that build the built environment. And said, you know, we think what you're doing affects health, which it does. And the early interactions were kind of, you know, you stay in your lane and we'll stay in ours. And what are you doing? Tell us what to do. But gradually we built up some very nice relations to these other professions. Started inviting them to our professional meetings, public health, got invited to their professional meetings in planning and architecture and landscape architecture and all these other areas. And gradually built a group at CDC on the national level, looking at, how do we get health more involved in the design of the built environment? And I helped develop that group and manage that group by retired, about 20 years of federal experience, whatever. Retire, let it move on to the next thing about 10, 12 years ago. Living in Atlanta, I will say, was in part the built environment issue. I can't say I was very thrilled by it. I was on the campus with 3,000 people and six of us rode bicycles because that's the environment, because the environment was incredibly hostile for cyclists. I'm sort of in that group that will ride anywhere, anytime, no matter how horrible. But that is not what you really want to encourage for the general population. So on finishing there and really with the freedom to go, anyway, it looked interesting. I've been to Seattle a number of times. I've never actually lived here. And I was involved in a few projects here at various times, including looking at health impacts of the 520 Bridge in about 2005. We've been involved there. The Health Department here did a, what's called a health impact assessment, looking at some health impacts of a proposed project. And I was helping from CDC, the Health Department here. I had various contacts here.
That was pre-replacement, right?
Yeah, this is 2005, as they were planning the replacement and looking at what some of the health issues would be on it. And for the most part, they were doing some of the right thing. One of the interesting interactions was that you mentioned value engineering. In Georgia, the value engineer, you're building a road with a sidewalk, value engineer says you put it in as you require it and you remove it as soon as you got the engineer out. And the comment came up here, where you've got this great bike pedestrian lane on 520. Do we have to be concerned that it might be removed? And so I was looking, he says, it's Seattle, we'd not be tolerating. The attitude was so different. Hey, we're building this for people in Atlanta, certainly other street. I didn't ask anything about Atlanta, but from the built environment and livability point of view, for someone who walks bikes and likes transit, it's just sort of polar extremes. Moved out here and I'm part-time at University of Washington, got faculty appointments in both public health, which is my background, but also in urban planning. So I've been working with the urban planning department at various projects with other faculty. Got to know from architects, Rick and others who were in that with full college built environment because architecture and planning are together there. I've had quite a few students from urban planning. And the courses I teach all link health and the built environment. One is called Health and Built Environment. The other is the whole course called Health Impact Assessment, where we take a local project and look at it from the health point of view while it's still in the playing stage. We work with, with S dot.
They went away again.
But.
Are we losing you online? Did we lose you online? Maybe it was just David.
Okay. I don't hear nothing.
Okay, do you hear me, David?
Michaela, can you hear?
I can hear, I can hear David and I can hear you.
Oh, must be on David's end.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Did anybody ask if I was online? I'm sorry, did anybody ask if I was online, if I was listening?
No.
All right, apologies.
Okay, David left and must be trying to rejoin. Anyway, so for about the last 12, 13 years I've been teaching these courses, what's exciting about them is we get urban planners and architects and engineers and public policy and other, in the same classroom as public health students and they kind of learn each other's languages. And I tell them upfront, I will interrupt you when you use jargon, abbreviations and things that they have for classes. No idea what you're talking about. So it's sort of getting them to talk to each other. That's been a lot of fun to work across those areas. I was on the bike advisory board here until last year, whatever, about four years on that. So we mentioned transportation plans and interactions with that, yet we were hearing about that from that board. And I heard you had an opening here and I talked to David and Rick. It sounded like this is a great way to sort of get to see this side of how you get built environment and health working together. So I was very pleased to be asked.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We haven't had a, well, Jamie has experience in public health. We had a commissioner, Amy Shunin. I don't know if you're past.
Which we also worked in.
And so that.
And then we have Sandra.
And Sandra, right. So we both have people who have helped before and welcome that perspective. And so are looking forward to, looking forward to learning about more for all three of you. And thanks for sharing your little bio blurb with us all. And Michaela, I don't have anything else, any other commission business, so I take it back to you.
Okay, do we, we have an opportunity now for a public comment? Do we have anybody in the room or on the phone?
Nobody on the phone, nobody via email and no members of the public in the room. Nobody on the phone, nobody via email and no members of the public in the room.
Okay. Well, with that, I adjourned this meeting and thank you all so much and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thanks all.
Thank you.
Bye.